We're going to call the April school board meeting to order. We will start with our invocation by Ms. Mary Fertitta and a pledge.
Please bow your heads if you wish. We thank you for allowing us to gather this evening and for the infinite blessings you have bestowed upon us, Heavenly Father. Let us conduct this meeting with the vision to see the best of things to come, the divine wisdom to make informed decisions for our district, and most of all, faith that you are with us in every step of the way. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item B, report.
Mr. Wright. Dr. Diott, here. Ms. Bavin. Ms. Fertitta.
Here.
Mr. Atlantis. Ms. Boujwa.
Here.
Marlborough.
Here.
Ms. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Charvich.
Here.
Your board.
Item two, awards and recognition. A, introduce the principal of Thibodeau Middle School. Martin.
So the newly appointed principal of, now we finally can't say "the" Thibodeau Middle School, right? Ms. Yeha? Here, next to behind me. We have with us tonight Ms. Latania Young. Ms. Latania Young was most previously the principal of West Thibodeau Middle School, so no one better to serve as the new principal of Thibodeau Middle School of Smartness Community, Ms. Latania Young.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. It is truly an honor to stand before the LaFouche Parish Superintendent, the Board, and just thank you. The legacy that is going to come out of Thibodeau Middle School will have Latania Young on it first. I am honored to stand here before you. I will do my absolute best to represent Thibodeau, LaFouche Parish, and this community with all integrity that I have. Again, thank you.
Me, LaFouche Parish School District Student Staff and Group Recognition. Mr. Guidry, Mr. Yelka, Ms. Hudson.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, thank you. My name is Dean Guidry. I am the communications professional of LaFouche Parish High School. Every month, we take a little portion of our board meetings to recognize our students, staff, and community members that make LaFouche such a great place to learn and to work. Tonight, we're going to take a little time out of this meeting to recognize some of those people that make our system so special. Martin.
So tonight is the Support Person of the Year, and I think that we've got first Ms. Ann Hudson. But before she starts calling out the names, I'd be interested to say something, you know. Oftentimes, when I'm talking in groups of people, I talk about teachers because we're in the business of teaching, right? That's what we do. But just know that there's not a teacher in this parish, a principal in this parish that doesn't recognize that without the support folks, what we do doesn't happen. So thank you for what you do, all of you. And tonight is a very special time as we recognize those folks behind the scenes that make what teachers do possible. So with that, Ms. Hudson.
All righty. And I went through the list, and several of these people had one time worked for me, so I can...
So she's going to take credit for them.
No, I can attest to their greatness. That's what I want to say. I'll take credit for them, but I can attest to how valuable they are. Connie Thibodeau from Bayou Blue Elementary. Holly Founier from Bayou Blue Upper Elementary.
Much better.
Yes, sir.
Nidra Rouge from Bayou Buck Elementary. Lee Enkow from Chagmay Elementary. Dara Ruth from Cut Off Elementary. Linda Boudreaux from CM Washington. Macy Sharamy, Galliano Elementary. Megan Savan, Golden Matter Lower Elementary. Crystal Rogers, Golden Matter Upper Elementary. Gina Carroll, Lockport Lower Elementary. Jessica Fonseca, Lockport Upper Elementary. Charlene Adams, North LaRose Elementary. Jessica LeBlanc, Raceland Lower Elementary. Marilyn Aveyer, Raceland Upper Elementary. Jerry Griffin, South LaRose Elementary. Celeste Lagarde from St. Charles Elementary. This person will receive the award on her behalf. Janelle Casabone, Thibodeau Elementary. Brian Williams, WS LaFare. And those are the elementary outstanding school supporters.
All right, from Bayou Blue Middle School, we have Ms. Grace Guidry. From East Thibodeau Middle School, Ms. Nicole Floyd-Charles. From Golden Matter Middle School, Ollie Terabone. From LaRose Cut Off Middle School, we have Tracy Gochro. From Lockport Middle School, we have Ms. Renee Mohammed. To be clear, I take credit for that. From Raceland Middle School, Ms. Chastity Bro.
I take credit for her. The humility, you make me sparkle.
From Six Ward Middle School, Ms. Dana Boujwa. From West Thibodeau Middle School, Ms. Joyce Johnson. From Central LaFouche High School, Ms. Hope Adams. From South LaFouche High School, Ms. Nicole Ducey. From Thibodeau High School, Ms. Brittany Spacido. And from the Career Magazine Center, we have Ms. Norlette Hollywood. Congratulations. She likes them all, if you want to put them on the left side.
All righty, so now I have the overall outstanding school support for elementary. Our winner this year is Celeste Lagarde from St. Charles Elementary.
I take a big one. I get the big one.
Both up your name, or?
Yes. Are we filming somewhere like that's the camera?
All right, our middle school overall winner for this year, Ms. Renee Mohammed. And our high school parish winner, Hollywood Porter. Okay, now that we've set the board, that's us. For how to put them at LaFouche Parish. We've already announced that we do want to recognize our Parish Principal of the Year, Dr. Reagan Larran. I have to say, if you don't know the story, today I visited her campus to bestow this award on her. The school had done a little bit of a pajama day. She, or took and said, "I show up, she's got no makeup on, a pajama." So the picture you see on the website, a, how do you call that?
Photoshop.
So we're glad you look nice. I take credit for that. Yeah, and I don't want to forget, she's not only the LaFouche Parish Principal of the Year, but a finalist for the state competition for Principal of the Year.
The results, we'll find out at Teacher Leader Meeting later on during the summer.
And as part of this, as long as we're, you know, just doing all this good stuff on her, you know, her school was named the Comeback Campus by the State Department of Education because the scores at her school are actually surpassing the pre-pandemic scores. So not only do the kids have a nice, good time, but the kids are going to be okay. So, great job.
Thank you.
So if you think this was fun, wait till we get to the business part of it. And also, for all the support folks over here tonight, thank you for celebrating with us. Thank you for celebrating and bringing your families here, and thank you for what you do for the kids at LaFouche Parish every day. We couldn't do what we do without your support. So thank y'all so much. Thank y'all.
Item three, approval of board consent agenda items. A, approval of board consent agenda items. B, minutes of regular board meeting held on March 1st, 2023. C, superintendent's quarterly report for the period January through March 2023. D, observances in the schools, Autism Awareness Day, April 19th, 2023. Administrative Professionals Day, April 26th, 2023. Teacher Appreciation Week, May 8th through 12th, 2023. School Lunch Hero Day, May 5th, 2023. School Nurses Day, Wednesday, May 10th, 2023. National Police Week, May 14th through 20th, 2023. Motion by Ms. Fertitta, second by Ms. Charpentier. Any public comment? Discussion? If not, we'll vote.
Question, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, just to clarify, the School Lunch Day, May 5th, not May 6th, correct? Is that right? Okay.
Any further board questions? All right, we'll vote. Not coming up, but motions have to be, motion has to be. Item four, approval of policy and academics committee recommendations as per meeting held March 15th, 2023. Dr. Gia.
You approve revisions to Policy B, C, B, D, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination ISO move.
Motion by Dr. Gia, second by Ms. Boujwa. Any public comment? We'll open up the board discussion. Dr. Gia.
So, the policy revision was based, obviously, as we transitioned from a 15-member board to a nine-member board. There were some adjustments that we needed to consider when reviewing potential agenda items. And so, we got with our attorney, board attorney. He reviewed and made recommendations to the Policy and Academics Committee. And we reviewed them and it did pass through. Some of the specifics was how agenda items would come to be if a public member or a board member had a request to put an agenda. So we put some criteria based on what was the timelines for submission. And then established the review process via ad hoc committee or an executive committee via ad hoc. And again, that replaced the other committee that we had, which was Advisory Committee. Which used to do the same thing, right? And then we also put the criteria for the committee to kind of lead the committee specifically on what items. Obviously, things need to be in our jurisdiction, they need to be actionable. Or if it's determined that it's part of an information, obviously, where that should best be placed. And then obviously, you know, we need to have items come before the board that are within our jurisdiction via the state. And so, that's kind of the review. And again, as I said, this was reviewed by the board attorney and approved. And so I submit for approval, the end of all.
Further board discussion? Ms. Marlborough?
Okay, um, there's a couple of things. And I'm hoping we can table this to another day, but I'm gonna say what I feel needs to be said. First, it's said by the Executive Committee, ad hoc needs to be added in there because ad hoc is not there. We do not have an Executive Committee. Second, school's board members should not have to submit items up to we should be able to be allowed to submit items up to 24 hours prior to a board meeting. It's being done on new items, our new business. We're not allowed to do it as a board member. I don't think that's right. And whoever gets to add it, they're getting to bypass this whole rule. And I want to be able to do it too, because I'm a board member. BBC, if that's the case, we haven't been following it for a while. Because it says special committees ad hoc may form time to time to be appointed by the board. That means the board needs to do that, which means it closes new business from being put on the agenda. We should be doing and reviewing that as well. I was elected by the people of District 7. And to speak openly, how can I do that if my right as a board member to place items on the agenda is stopped? And dictated or controlled. And at some point, potentially could be by non-elected officials and third parties. My job, and I was elected to, protect the First Amendment right of my constituents. I cannot do that if my right to put something on the agenda is stopped. And then I have to have it approved by a non-elected official. This is not okay. And, I mean, it's taken it away from me. I mean, this just isn't right. I know if my right to put what I want on the agenda is taken away, I cannot defend my constituents or allow them to be heard. This policy is one step closer to dictatorship. The policy would have made it where if we sat here and wanted to be real and talk about items that are not associated with schools, we would not be able to talk about the garbage portion of the tax reform. We would not be able to talk about, in announcements, nonprofit groups, or anything like that that is not a part of the school system. And it would have to go to ad hoc. And I just think it's crazy that they, we're gonna limit our board members. We should trust each other to have the discretion and to be able to discern what we want to bring to put onto this agenda. I agree, we needed a guideline, set expectation and an understanding. And I do believe that needs to be set. But putting restrictions on elected members is not the way to do it. We are entering into a slippery slope of silencing me as a board member and everybody else on this committee and cutting this board and cutting their legs out from underneath them. Furthermore, I would like to see in writing from the school board attorney where this is okay. I also would like to take it and get a second opinion from Jeff Landry to make sure that this is totally legal, what we are doing. And that is not violating people's First Amendment rights and not violating my right as an elected official. I just, I just think it's crazy. I would have been okay with all of this had it not hardened, had stopped my right from speaking. That still gave me the right to go. If a constituent came to me and said the ad hoc committee did not allow me to get on the agenda, that they could come sit with me, talk to me about it. Because my district, District 7, may not be the same as District 4. And the rights and what my people feel may not be what other people feel. But I should have the right to come in here as a board member who was elected by the people to discuss these things and put them on the agenda without restriction. And I just do not agree with this. So I hope you guys will table this, that we can sit down and find a way to work together to find solutions for parents, for students, for our community at large, our taxpayers and everybody sitting in this room. And I really hope that can be done. That's all I've got to say.
So, the last sentence from this, it says, "Any request denied by Executive Ad hoc Committee may be overruled only by a majority of the seated board members, five, and placed on the agenda at the next scheduled board meeting." So there is a mechanism for every item to be overruled by the board as we sit. And so, within that mechanism, again, I believe it gives opportunity. It is not set to be exclusive, more inclusive of opportunities in fairness. And again, however the ad hoc committee is made up, I think everybody would have a free opportunity to be on that throughout our term of four years. Because we only nine, and so you're gonna get on it at some point. And I believe also that us nine, we're put on here to be fair, honest, ethical in our approach to fairness to the community and to the fellow board members. And that is part of our responsibility or our expectation as elected board members. So I think we meet all those kinds of rules. And I still am inclined to support this as passive.
Yes, we, this is not anything that's new. We, in the past, when a board member wanted to have something placed on the agenda, we did have to go to the president to ask for it to be put on the agenda. This is nothing different. The same guidelines are in place. So, and I think it's good that the board members are expected to do the exact same thing that the public is expected to do. I think that we're not showing any favoritism to board members or to the public. That's, and I will support this change.
I have to go around for everyone to have a first before we have second. My own comment, in essence, I feel like by allowing the ad hoc, it takes the full decision away from the president who's saying yes or no. I do appreciate the fact, even sitting at the head of the table as the president, I feel like it gives an opportunity for the three members on that ad hoc committee to weigh in before a decision is made. I'm not sure whose hand went up first. Ms. Wells?
I just want to say, the ad hoc committee is gonna be made up of four members, correct? So it will be elected officials.
Is there any further board discussion? Ms. Marlborough?
I just want to say that I do support this because I don't feel any of this written stifles my responsibility as a board. I think it gives us good guidelines, like you said. That last line, oh, it's everything.
Okay, well then, someone needs to explain to me.
Hang on a second, I'm sorry. No, just hang on a second. Is there anyone else that has not gotten a chance to speak yet? We need to go around once before we go second. Anyone else at the table that have not gotten a chance to speak yet would like to have a comment? If not, your turn.
So I need to explain to me how announcements of things that don't pertain to this criteria that's in here are being put on the agenda. And how right now, new business is being done, because there is no ad hoc committee. According to the policy right here, it's the board that votes on the ad hoc committee. We decided. And that hasn't come in front of us yet to decide it. So, and it also says in here, it's not just elected officials. It could be, it says, "Any special committees need not to be restricted to members of the board, but shall include such persons who may have knowledge or interest in the subject studied." Which means we would have to go through a process, if I'm incorrect, please correct me. We'd have to go through a process, advertise it, find someone to come in, someone to study it, to be on that board. And then, if we only have five days before, and that's when we're supposed to put it to get on the agenda, you can't do all that in five days, because the board has to meet. Then we have to go through and let that committee do its work at the next committee meeting to have it done transparently in front of the public. Then, by the time we get back to the next committee meeting, we're already six weeks out from someone being on the agenda, potentially. And this is what it says. Again, like I said, it does need to be, have a criteria. So we are fair and equal and represent everybody. But I do not think taking away a board member's rights to be able to put what they want on the agenda and to discern. We have to trust one another. We have to be able to say, we, we trust each other and we're working together. But this is taking that right away of trust, because it's not allowing me to say, okay, I came in, I heard this out, I truly supported, the people of my district support it. I would like it to be discussed with the nine people on this board openly. Whether it passes, fails, or isn't even up for voting, but for us just to have a discussion in front of the public, whether we agree or disagree. It allows us the opportunity to also educate the public to why we're making said decision. And allow us to discuss it. But this is gonna even take that right away and be determined by people who aren't even elected officials. And it's not okay. And I honestly feel that we should table it and let Jeff Landry and let Mr. Almody come in and explain to us and give us their opinions to why or how this is totally legal.
Any further board discussion?
Ask a question, point please. No board member shall be denied the right to have an item placed on the public's agenda of the board meeting.
Unless?
So, I mean, I'm reading just the first part of it, unless it doesn't meet the criteria. So you keep saying that, that you're not gonna be allowed, or none of us will be allowed, but that's not the case.
Yes, it is, because we have to keep things.
I'm going to the gentleman that actually, actually I'm sorry, you questioned again. I mean, are we, we're not saying that new board member can bring forth.
No, it doesn't say that at all. At least not in my interpretation, now, maybe.
Mine either.
There's a word somewhere that's different, but in my interpretation, again, it sets guidelines for us as a board to meet our charge, right? We have a responsibility to meet our charge. And we should discuss actionable items. Or if it's not an actionable item, if it's a report nature, then we should be able to hear those reports within a committee setting. Again, I will trust that ad hoc committee. And I believe the expectation, again, I'm not the president of the board, but I believe the expectation would it be made up of three board members. Because again, it's business of the board, so it should be amongst the board member. I also believe that this is an opportunity, though, as I stated, my first statement was, as we transition. So just like any previous policies, we adjusted before we went to the nine. This is an opportunity to get through, make it work. It needs revisions. I'm open to make revisions. Again, i- if it comes across where it sets up a scenario where something is unfair, I'm gonna be the first one to say, we gotta do something different. And I'm staying by that. So.
I do agree, and I feel like it's very important that we always keep in mind that the policies are always a revision. If a policy is there and we as a board feel like it is not in the best interest of everyone involved, that it is, sometimes it is time to sit back and review the policy on an ad needed basis.
Ms. Charpentier?
I personally am not reading this document to be stifling the board or excluding the board from the ability to overrule the decision of the executive or ad hoc committee. I mean, I, and I may be missing something, but from my perspective in reading it, it appears to me that we do have the ability to present suitable content onto the agenda, meaning board-related items that require vote. And that's what I mean by suitable content. Because this board is responsible for certain things. You know, we're responsible for the health of the business, the finance, that, you know, the academics and policies of this, this district. And I'm not reading this as restrictive. And I'm leaning towards supporting it myself, so I just wanted to make that statement.
So, this is restrictive, because if I have a constituent that tried to work it out with the superintendent, could not do it, there is no other place for them to go to hire a lawyer. They can't come talk to me. There's nothing in here saying executive session, there's nothing in here saying that. I can't go put that on the agenda to say, hey, we need to talk about this as a group, because this is what's happening in our school district. I have had parents ask to speak to every single board member previously to this board. I have had constituents ask to sit and talk and get on the agenda. I myself have, and it was school-related content, things that will impact our school district, things that were going on in our legislature here in the state of Louisiana that would have impacted us. And I was told no. And I know other parents sitting in this room have been told no. So I can't come in, even if it's just even school-related, not school-related, or something, let's talk about the tax reform. What the parish council does with garbage is not our business, according to this new plan. But we talked about it. We worked with them. But it's not our business to discuss under this, if it only has to do with school. So good, brilliant ideas being brought to this board from people will be shut down. And again, the, what's not being addressed is the third party in the current BBC says, in BBC policy. It is saying, third parties can be a part of these committees, not just elected officials. And we're gonna sit here and pass something on that instead of table it, have a good discussion about it and come back with something that's not contradictory. Why don't we fix the policies first, then put policies in place that go together rather than contradict one another? And sell it that way. We're gonna sell it to the public. We need to sell it openly and honestly.
Who was first?
I see a third-party person, let's say it was something that we need to talk about in buildings. Well, we might bring in this person who's in charge of maintenance. I think that, I see that as a third party.
That is what I was
Or one of the supervisors that are in charge of whatever. That, I don't think we'll go out to John Q. Public and say, okay, come here, we want you to serve on this ad hoc committee. They have no knowledge of what's going on. I see it as a place where we're gonna go to the experts that we hired to do their jobs. I wanted to say something that one of our former board members, who was very, a very seasoned board member, was on this board for over 20 years. And he always stated that we can always agree to disagree. And if we disagree, we, you know, we just stand up and say, we understand your feelings, but we're gonna go on and continue to work as a board. And so, as, as Mr. Archer used to say, I, you know, I feel that way. And I always admired him for always reminding us of that.
That was my interpretation of third party as well, that we would rely on our seasoned staff members. Ms. Ortiz and her staff, for example, if it was finance-related, you know, to make that committee. That was my understanding of it, and I didn't take it as an outside party. So maybe the wording could be tweaked a little bit, but I'm not reading malice into it.
Do you want the motion to set?
Well, I would like to respond to what Ms. Fertitta said, because if I understand correctly, school board members cannot serve on the school board. Our school board employees cannot serve on the school board. So if we're gonna go put school board employees on a school board committee, we are now violating the ethics law. So we can't do that. Because that committee has to come in front of them to talk about why and put forth that decision. And they're not board members. So how can they be a part of that? I'm very confused.
Read Robert's Rules of Order, because an ad hoc committee can be anyone, can be anyone.
But Robert's Rules of Order doesn't dictate our ethics.
Well, it dictates what we do for our board. I'm sorry, I'm
Allow school board employees to come dictate if a board member can have something on the agenda.
Let's just vote. First, I need to ask, we have a motion on the table. Do you want the motion to ask the table?
Yeah, I would.
Okay, so I have a motion to table the item. Do I have a second? The motion, dog. So we go back to our original motion? Yes, Dr. Gia?
So the thinking is, in my view, is that any outside member from the board would not have a vote. They would be a consulting member to the group, right? And so
Hang on, it's, it's, Dr. Gia passed the floor, so please hang on.
So, again, in my view, still inclined to support this as it's written. I certainly don't have a problem taking recommendations or suggestions for adjustments for the next board, next meeting we come to, the next committee meeting we come to, to make this policy better in, in that. I don't think tabling it is, is the correct response for us. Because this policy needs to be in place. So all parties know the criteria and the expectations for getting on the agenda, whether it be a committee or be in our general, and thank you.
Well then, let's hash it out right now. Let's go through it and see what we can fix. And then we can put a perfect policy
I call a question, meansless vote.
Okay, I'm just gonna go back and review for a second. The motion is to approve the revisions of the Policy B, C, B, D, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination. I have a motion by Dr. Gia and a second by Ms. Boujwa. So that is the item at hand. We're gonna go ahead and, if there's no further discussion, we're gonna go ahead and vote. We called public comment in the beginning, I'm sorry.
Madam President, I would like the record to reflect that Ms. Marlborough exited the meeting room at the time. So I'd like the record to reflect that. Thank you.
All right, item five, approval of business committee recommendations as per meeting held February 15th, 2023. Ms. Fertitta?
Yes. A, to award the only responsive and responsible proposal, gallo, proposer, gallo mechanical services as the district's emergency HVAC service repair provider for all state consulting's review and recommendations. So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fertitta, second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes. Item six, approval of business committee recommendations as per meeting held March 15th, 2023. Ms. Fertitta?
Item A, to approve the renewal quotes for a certain building and contents insurance and for drone non-ownership liability insurance policies that renewed in April 2023 as recommended by Ms. Cornwall Grove, School Board Property and Casualty Insurance Consultant. So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fertitta, second by Mr. Wright. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Good evening to all. In your packet or on your screen, you'll see a new spreadsheet. It was updated just a few hours ago. If you remember when I was here for the committee, those of you that were here, we didn't actually vote on this item, on the building and contents, because the numbers wasn't, the number wasn't final yet. We still had a couple of companies that had to give us their final approval. With that being said, we have approval now from all of the carriers to go ahead and buying coverage. You'll see column four is the renewal being offered. There's gonna be 12 insurance carriers participating in the four layers of coverage this year. carriers participating in the four layers of coverage this year. This board buys a $20 million limit for named windstorm and $100 million for all other perils, regular wind, not a windstorm, is at the $100 million. The deductible will remain the same at the 5% with a $250,000 minimum, and then all other perils will be the $100,000 flat deductible. All other terms and conditions will remain the same. When you go down the page to line 17, the premium for this renewal is going to be $3,127,833, about $948,000 increase over expiring. And this is actually about $14,000 less than what it was two weeks ago. So they did get it down just a little bit for you. And I'm going to go ahead and recommend that you go ahead and renew this policy. When you flip to the next page, you're going to see this is the drone non-ownership liability policy that the board buys when drones are being used to survey all of their properties and buildings. Again, column four is being offered, the $4 million limit. It's still the same terms and conditions, nothing changes there, and your deductible will remain the same also. The premium will also remain the same, the $2,738 for this year. And I'm going to go ahead and recommend that you also approve renewing that policy. If you flip, there should be one more page. Did it make it on there? Okay. It was just, it was the breakdown of the four layers. It gave you the premium breakdown of each one of the layers. It's the same carriers that we've had in the past. There's no difference, no changes there. The only thing, the only option that we were able to get, your agent was able to get for you, you'll see on the very bottom of the first page is to increase that name storm deductible from 5% to 10%. It would be about $190,000 savings. I do not think that is enough savings to increase your deductible amount to 10% at this time. So I am not going to recommend that deductible change in that deductible. Any questions?
The $1 million change from last year to this year, is that just from everybody else, the same increase we're experiencing?
The same increase, less carrier participation, carrier capacity. It's just what's happening in the property market today.
Just cover the new school being built also?
The new school is on this statement of values, and I'm glad you mentioned that. If you look at the very top of the first page, under line one, your statement of values, it's increasing. It was at $412 million last year. This year, it's going to be at $447 million. And yes, the new school is on there.
I have a comment. Now, after we demolish the other two schools, we're going to drop the insurance on that, so that should lower our policy. It's going to lower your statement of values. It should, yes.
You want to remove me from the board because I have a family emergency, then go ahead and do it. I'll see you.
Apologize. Any public comment to deal with the insurance agenda item? If not, we're going to go ahead and vote. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item B, to approve the renewal of power technologies maintenance plan. So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fertitta, second by Ms. Charvantea. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item C, to approve bids for chiller compressor replacement. So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fertitta, second by Ms. Bouzwa. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item D, to approve bids for limestone and aggregate. So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fertitta, second by Ms. Wright. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes. Item seven, approval of land and facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held March 15, 2023. Mr. Duplantis?
A, to approve the low bid for the hurricane item repairs to the cutoff elementary school. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Duplantis, second by Ms. Fertitta. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes, excuse me.
B, to accept a change order request for WS LaBarre Elementary School, building 14. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Duplantis, second by Ms. Charvantea. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
C, to accept a change order request for WS LaBarre Elementary School, building two and three. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Duplantis, second by Ms. Fertitta. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
D, to accept a change order request for Golden Meadow Upper Elementary School. So moved.
Mr. Duplantis, second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
E, to accept a change order request for South LaFouche High School. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Duplantis, second by Ms. Bouzwa. Any public comment? Board discussion? We'll vote. Motion passes.
F, to accept a change order request for Tibidale High School. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Duplantis, second by Ms. Fertitta. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
D, to accept a change order request for Central LaFouche High School Athletic Field. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Duplantis, second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board discussion? We'll vote. Motion passes.
H, to accept a change order request for Central. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Duplantis, second by Ms. Charvantea. Any public comment? Board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
I, to accept a change order request for the elevation of the baseball field bleachers at Central LaFouche High School. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Duplantis, second by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board discussion?
I just have a question. Most of these change orders, we've heard.
This one as an example, it's an expensive one, right? So the previous stadium features, I should say, at Central LaFouche were in fact elevated when the designer designed the new ones. They were not elevated. It wasn't caught until construction was about to begin. So we're going back like and come. So it should be imminent eligible. Maybe our consultants are going to be very hesitant. It shall be imminent eligible, but this is all going to be filed with the claim and should be, you know. This is putting back the way that they were.
I would just like to thank Mr. Bob. Every land and facility committee meeting, he brings a detailed listing of every project that is going on in our parish and our district. And it is pretty thorough. A lot of times we have to ask him questions, and he will answer them for us. It's amazing. I don't know how that one man can do it all, but he does. So I just want to thank Mr. Bob. If you have any questions, come to the land and facility committee meeting because that's where you will find out and you can question him yourself if you have any questions about anything.
I'll answer that, too. I really appreciated the photos that he added to the reports of the committee meetings. It makes it all make sense because some of these things are like, what is that? And why does it, you know, what does it entail? So it really does help, and he's outstanding as well.
Any further board discussion? You're welcome. Let's vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Duplantis. Item eight, new business. A, to accept a low bid from Tosh LLC for hurricane item repairs at Raceon Upper Elementary School.
Yes, ma'am. The recommended action is to approve the low bid from Tosh LLC in the amount of $318,000 for hurricane item repairs at Raceon Upper Elementary School. This is coming straight to the board tonight and not to land facilities because of time. This has to do with the removal of flooring in Raceon Upper Elementary School. The contractor needs to mobilize and be ready to do this at the start of summer. So this is to get the work done before the school year begins in August. And so rather than waiting to make board, we thought it was pressing to put it before you. Tosh is the low bidder and the recommended action is to approve.
Can I get a motion, please? Motion by Ms. Bouzwa, seconded by Ms. Fertitta. Any public comment? Any board discussion?
I do want to make comment that these are the type of items that we have to vote on immediately. You know, it's something that can't be brought to a committee. You said it super candid, but I do want the public to understand that sometimes agenda items have to be thrown because of the time constraints that we're under, especially with item repairs.
Thank you very much. Any further board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes. B, to accept a low bid from Gil Industries for hurricane item repairs at cutoff elementary school, Galliano Elementary School, Lockport Upper Elementary School, alternate one, Shack Bay Elementary School, and alternate two, WS LaFouche Elementary School. Mr. Martin?
Same scenario here with time. This is work that we need to get done in the summer so that school can open in August. The recommended action is to approve the low bid from Gil Industries in the amount of $135,000 for hurricane item repairs at cutoff elementary school, Galliano Elementary School, Lockport Upper Elementary School. And there was an alternate bid, alternate one, in the amount of $11,000 at Shack Bay Elementary School and alternate number two, in the amount of $69,000 at WS LaFouche Elementary School.
Can I get a motion? Motion by Dr. Gion, seconded by Mr. Duplantis. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I just have a comment that it's good to see that the bids are more in line now than they used to be. So things seem to be normalizing. That's a great thing.
Very much so.
Anyone else? Let's vote. Motion passes. Item C, to ratify the Hurricane Idar Recovery Grant Program Agreement between the Louisiana Department of the Treasury and the Parish of LaFouche. Martin?
Madam President, so in the last legislative session, spearheaded by our representative Ziza Rang, they were able to come up with some one-time money and give this money to the most impacted parishes from Hurricane Idar. In total, $33 million was divvied out to the parishes impacted the most by Hurricane Idar. LaFouche Parish is going to get 9.6 million of the 33 million. They are the agency that's actually in contract with the Department of Treasury to get the money. What you are ratifying tonight is an agreement with the LaFouche Parish government that will allow the school board to receive $2,43,711 of the 9.6 million that the parish is going to receive from the state. The recommended action is to ratify the Hurricane Idar Recovery Grant Program Agreement between the Louisiana Department of Treasury and the Parish of LaFouche.
Can I get a motion? Motion by Mr. Wright, seconded by Ms. Charvantea. Any public comment? Board discussion? I'd like to say, wonderful. That's great. She's for...
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes. Item D, to consider a request from the Down the Bay Tribe Club to waive rental fees for the use of a South LaFouche High School stadium in drive. I know Ms. Compo is here to speak.
That's great. Hi, I'm Anika Compo. I'm just a mom. Okay, I'm just a mom. Last year, we were traveling to and from Homa for my six-year-old, now seven, to compete in a track team. We travel all over Lower Louisiana to compete during the summertime on Saturdays. So there is another one at Central, but the guy there only takes middle school and up. So I am going to ask for waiver of fees. We have 39 children registered as of now, nine coaches available and giving their time and effort. We have done some fundraising and all this stuff. Not a lot of fundraising, like a small amount thing. So I really hope, we are a nonprofit, though. Really hoping to waive the fees for us. We have a bunch of dedicated people to help, and these children really need this down the bay. We don't have much during the summer. So it's a very small, but more than we expected group. So we're really, really relying on South LaFouche High School to use the facilities there.
Absolutely. So I was contacting Governor Spann, the board principal. She's actually coordinated through this and is in favor of supporting it, and all of the agency's insurance has already been vetted through our risk manager, and it's all in order.
I do need a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Fertitta, second. Ms. Bouzwa, any public comment? Any board discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Compo and Ms. Deanna Jeremy for starting this. In Lower LaFouche, we have, like she said, we have really nothing much for these kids to do, and it's very costly to drive to Homa from, especially Golden Meadow area. to do, and it's very costly to drive to Homa from, especially Golden Meadow area, to partake in any kind of travel thing. So this is like very exciting for our area, and my own daughter is going to be participating, and we are very excited, so thank you so much.
I would also like to thank you. Tried to get my son to sign up, but did not. Maybe next year, maybe next year the program. But it is very much needed down the bay. As you know, our recovery is still at stage one in many of the areas, especially extraparicular features for our kids, and I think that those are really important to keep them focused, to keep them conditioned, and out of trouble during the summertime. So thank you for bringing this to South LaFuge.
Also, thank you. Never say that you're just a mom.
A lot of men just say that you're just a mom.
And I love to see the pride when you say down the bay.
Thank you.
I would like to see the parents actually participate in running.
Hey, they do have that. I just didn't sign up for that. 55-year-old man pole vaulting last year. Oh, cheer him on. I myself on that vault.
Amazing.
Thank you for doing this for our kids. Thank you very much. You to be commended. All right. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote. Motion passes. Ms. Campo, you guys have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you. All right. Item nine, letter A. Item number superintendent's report. A says to receive a report from Superintendent Morton regarding RS 1781.
Thank you, Madam President. Louisiana law statute 1781 dating violence requires in the spring of each year, each local superintendent shall make an oral argument or report in a meeting of the school governing authority that shall include, but need not be limited to, the compliance of each school with requirements of the statute, aggregate data relative to dating violence, and any recommendations for reducing dating violence amongst students in grades 7 through 12. I'm happy to report that all of our schools have verified compliance with the required professional relevant, as well as the reporting component of the statute. There have been no reports of dating violence at any high school.
Thank you very much. Item 10, memorial resolutions. A, Brenda Vicneer, retired teacher. Ms. Fertitta?
Yes. Ms. Brenda Vicneer was hired by LaFuge Parish School District on August 11, 2003, as a special education teacher at West Tibodale Middle School. Ms. Vicneer retired on June 1, 2013, having served LaFuge Parish, having served LaFuge Parish for a total of 10 years. I do want to say that Ms. Vicneer and I have been friends, were friends for a very, very long time, and she was also a neighbor. She lived down the street, so we kept in contact, and it's very sorrowful, you know, when I heard the news of her passing, and I know her family, family needs prayers and support.
B, Kim Woods, child nutrition technician. Mr. Wright?
Ms. Kim Woods was hired by LaFuge Parish School Board District on January 2, 2001, the child nutrition technician at East Tibodale Middle School. Ms. Woods passed away on February 28, 2023. Ms. Woods served LaFuge Parish for a total of one and one and a half years. That's a great person, shocking to the community. Went to church together, she was a youth choir director, and her and my mom worked together at St. Joseph Manor. My mom, Kim didn't drive, and my mom dropped off the day before she fell sick. I'm still kind of shocked. She's a great, beautiful spirit person. She was saying, well, a great family, a big family, I think, like 12. She's a great, great, great person. I truly miss her, and just keep her, keep our parents. Our daughter, she had one daughter. You know, keep them. Our parents, daughters and...
I'd like to also say that I know Ms. Woods' sister very well, and is wonderful, wonderful family. She will be dear in this area. I do, but we all need to go ahead. Thank you, Ben.
I believe that these resolutions be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of these resolutions be recorded on a special page of our manual book.
No objections. Let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on a special page of our manual book. Item 11, tentative dates of future meetings. A, Policy and Academics Committee, Wednesday, April 19, 2023. B, Business Committee, Wednesday, April 19, 2023. C, Land and Facilities Management Committee, Wednesday, April 19, 2023. D, Regular Board Meeting, Wednesday, May 3, 2023. Before adjourned the meeting, I do have a few comments I would like to make. First off, I would like to thank the voters of LaFuge Parish, who went out on March 25 and helped to make the tax proposals on the table to pass, to benefit the future of the entire LaFuge Parish School District. To our employees who voted and attempted to rally support, congratulations. You deserve this and so much more. Your hard work daily is admired and appreciated. You do not go unnoticed. Superintendent Morton and Parish President Chasson, it weren't enough thank yous. Together, you guys drafted a plan and spent many hours presenting and advocating to our community. We appreciate your diligent hard work, as well as the time spent during the workday and evenings away from your own families. Your dedication and resilience are to be commended. Thank you both for making this a success. Your vote appreciated beyond.